Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochrane, and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to Order. First order of business, I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
All right. First order is, I'm going to ask the clerk, Kristin, if you're able to begin tonight's meeting with calling the role of the Commissioners.
Good evening. Tanya Bowers. Joseph Campos. Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Isaac Myron.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
Jerry Cochrane.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are seven members present, and we do have a quorum.
Excellent. Thank you, Kristin. So, the Planning Commission is an advisory board, made up of members appointed by the City Council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to the City Council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocation, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable Channel 191, and it'll be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting's also being recorded, and you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website at www.pasco-wa.gov, and you can click on the video-on-demand link and make your selection there of which meeting you want to listen to. There's also copies of the meeting agenda online at the City of Pasco website as well, and you can follow along those to follow along in the meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask the audience and those present to mute your cellphones so there won't be any interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, you're given the opportunity to address the Commission. When you do so, please raise your hand, whether you are in person or online, please make yourself known, and then we will let you address the Commission. Speak clearly, and then state your name and city of address so that we can have that in our records. Before we begin, it's important that you need to know and remind you that the State of Washington requires public meetings like the one being held this evening, not only to be fair but also to appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which a member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to a Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. So, first of all, are there any Planning Commission members who have a delect declaration to share at this time regarding any of the agenda items? Let the record show that none declared. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any of the Planning Commission members hearing any of the items on the agenda? Hearing none, let the record show that none declared as well. So, we, the Planning Commission, we really value your input, and we need your input. It helps us understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to the City Council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is our only opportunity to get out the facts and opinions placed into the official record of the City of Pasco and allow the official record, and the City Council can make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of the opportunity we have tonight. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from June 1st. It's actually not June 1st, but it was the third Thursday of June last month, meeting minutes. These meetings were mailed out to the Commissioners ahead of time. I trust you have the opportunity to look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Commissioner Handler, I so move.
Do I hear a second?
Commissioner Campos, I second it.
All right. Commissioner Handler moved, and Commissioner Campos seconded. It's been moved by the Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Campos. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? To let the record show that meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is old or unfinished business. I don't believe we have any tonight. The first item on the agenda in the public hearing section is Community Block Grant Development Program, CDBG, allocations, and this is Master File BGAP 2021-003, and I'll open it up for staff for initial comments. Or, is Angela not going, or nobody's going to present?
Well, I'll present.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Pittman is enjoying her 30-day retirement.
That's right.
Yeah, so she's not here, but this is the second of two public hearings. Every year, we do this exercise. Pasco is an entitlement city, so we get a set amount from the federal government each year to use for programs that primarily benefit low-to-moderate-income people and families. In Pasco, the overall guidance for spending that money comes from a resolution passed in the late 1990s, Resolution 1969, and it focuses on economic development activities and brick-and-mortar kind of projects that contribute to the community's overall well-being. In this year, much like all the years I think the Commission has been doing this, we receive far more requests than we have money for. We received 11 applications for roughly $1.17 million. We estimate that our 2022 entitlement will be about $750,000. It might go up a little or maybe down a little, but roughly, based on our estimate and on the federal formula, we expect to receive three-quarters of a million dollars. The staff report is prepared, like the Commission has seen several times in the past several years. There's the agency request listed on the attachment, and I'm referring to the first attachment, one that has some color on it. You'll see the agency request, the staff recommendation, there's a column for the Planning Commission recommendations, and then this will proceed to City Council in August based on the Planning Commission's recommendations. Of course, City Council has the final say. We did add two contingency projects, which is the green block on attachment number one. We did not receive applications from the Downtown Pasco Development Authority for either the specialty kitchen economic development activity or for the facade improvement program. Normally, they submit applications for those. They were added as a contingency in case a project is underspent or we get additional funds, which sometimes occurs depending on the sentiment of the federal government. So, you'll see the recommendation from staff, and I think unless the Commission has any questions, I'll just stop there.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'll open it up for your discussion, questions, alternate recommendations to
This is Commissioner Myron.
Go ahead, Commissioner Myron.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank staff for the presentation. Also, just noting, I think this recommendation is very equitable. I don't believe any of the applicants were denied funds, but there were some that received some larger cuts than others. But overall, it seems to be a pretty reasonable solution in sharing the funds that we expect. And so, these contingent funds would only be spent after the other funds have been spent for those who did apply. That's my understanding of it. So, yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron. So, the contingent ones, would those applicants then have to later provide proposals, or we're just keeping? So, you would ask for a proposal if we ended up with that contingent money?
Yes, they would. They would have to go through the same steps as everybody else, and the steps include the execution of something called a subrecipient agreement. So, it's a contract essentially with the city, and then they carry out the program as, you know, HUD regulations require.
Thank you. Any other questions from Commissioners or ultimate recommendations to what staff has Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Any individuals that wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. Anyone on the phone, or are you going to want to speak on this issue?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you. Go ahead and let us know your name and city of address.
I'm Natalie Kervman with Tred County Partners Habitat for Humanity. Thank you for having the public speak this evening or comment. Our head office is on Wellesian Way in Richland, but we serve full Franklin County, Benton, and Walla Walla Counties. I just wanted to reiterate that we've been present in the City of Pasco for quite some time now, building on Cedar and Alvinah. We believe that affordable homeownership is crucial in the housing continuum. It moves beyond rentals and gives people the chance to build wealth for their families, and we very much believe that this is an opportunity that low-income and moderate-income families in Pasco should be able to have. Homeownership gives the opportunity for not only the people initially receiving the homes to benefit, but for future generations as well as the wealth is transferred since they own the home. Thank you for considering Habitat for Humanity.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, or does anyone have questions from the Commissioners for Habitat Hearing none. Did you want to say anything?
No, I didn't know if I needed to be present if there was a question.
No, you could come back. That's fine. Sorry. All right. Well, with that, I will close the public comments section, and I would entertain a motion. I note that staff's recommendation is to carry forward these recommendations and make a recommendation for City Council to go with these staff recommendations.
Yeah, I'd offer a motion. Chair, this is Commissioner Myron.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron.
I move, yes, I move that the Planning Commission close the public hearing on the use of funds for the 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Thank you. Go ahead. Is that a second?
I move to second it. Correct.
Thank you, Commissioner Lerman. So, it was moved by Commissioner Myron and seconded by Commissioner Lerman that we close the public hearing and make the recommendation, staff recommendations, to City Councils. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, let the record show that was passed unanimously, and the recommendations will proceed to City Council, I assume, in the next workshop or August session?
I think we can get them at the next workshop, yes. They're the first one, first workshop in August, excuse me.
Excellent. Well, the next item on the agenda is also block grant, is the 2022 Home Fund allocations, Master File BGAP 2021-004, and I'll start with opening up for staff comments or presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and again, this is the second time, or the second public hearing for this pot of federal money as well. It's home money, and it's restricted to use providing home opportunities, housing opportunities for low-to-moderate-income people and families. The cities of Pasco, Kennewick, and Richland joined a home consortium together several, well, several decades ago now. Otherwise, each individual city would not be eligible for these funds, but together we are because of our population, and they're split based on the same formula that allocates the block grant entitlement. So, this year, we expect to receive through the entitlement and through program income $263,000. The program income is because we have a down payment assistance program. It's a no-interest loan essentially, and if you're in the house long enough, it's forgiven, five years. If you're in the house not long enough, you must pay it back, not with interest, but just the principal amount that you received in the first place. So, that's where our program income comes from. So, what staff is recommending is that we continue the down payment assistance program. It's limited to first-time homebuyers and those qualifying under federal block grant rules for income. And we've also added a tenant-based rental assistance program because, not so much in 2021, but in 2020, we experienced a shortage of applicants for the down payment assistance program because of the rapid rise in housing costs. So, in case that happens again this year, we have a second program to be able to use those funds and not be in danger of having to return them to the federal government.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the Commissioners?
No.
Yes, this is Commissioner Mendez. Could you please tell us again how many families are proposed to be served by either the down payment assistance program or the tenant-based program?
Again, we estimate 10 down payment assistance loans this year, and I'm not positive on how many will serve with the tenant-based rental assistance, but to date, we have served 28 families with that program. Forty-two, there were 42 applications. A certain amount fell off for whatever reason, and then we were left with 28 successful grants.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or comments from the Commissioners? Okay. Well, we'll open this item up for public discussion. Is there any individuals here that wish to speak on this public hearing item here tonight or on the phone?
This is Kristin.
Oh, go ahead, Kristin.
I just wanted to let the Commission know that as of Tuesday, we actually had our first down payment assistance loan for this year.
All right, hearing no members of the public that wish to speak on this item, I would entertain a motion. This one also has a recommendation from staff.
Commissioner Handler, I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Do I have a second?
Yes, this is Commissioner Myron, my second.
Thank you. It was moved by Commissioner Handler and seconded by Commissioner Myron for this to carry forward to the recommendation for the City Council to approve the staff recommendations as documented here in this item. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, the motion passed unanimously, and again, same thing, I imagine, staff, it'll move on to the workshop. Thank you. All right. Moving right along, the next item on our public hearing agenda is the accessory dwelling units, based on House Bill 1923. This is Master File CA 2020-003. This item has been before us a number of times the last few months, and I will open it up first to staff for any additional comments or changes since last month.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. As Commissioner Cochrane had mentioned, this is actually the fourth meeting on accessory dwelling units. We've had two workshops, and this is the second public hearing. And as always with some of these items, I'd like to prepare with some additional information and tidbits and just some data I pulled before this meeting. A 2021 report from the National Low-Income Housing Coalition had indicated that in the state of Washington, there's a shortage of 157,461 rental homes at the affordable level for low-to-moderate-income renters, and that an Eco Northwest study in January 2020 indicated that between 2000 and 2015, the state of Washington, underproduced housing by approximately 226,000 units. So, across the state, most jurisdictions are underproducing what our goal and mandates are via the Growth Management Act, and I think the accessory dwelling unit certainly can help address that issue at some level. So, with that, again, a quick highlight over the accessory dwelling unit proposal. Some of their benefits are the increased housing choices to the individuals across the community, and they can be adapted for different household types, sizes, incomes, and ages, provides entry-level housing, and some additional options for families to expand beyond their primary dwelling. And on the next slide, some of the public and stakeholder outreach and input, you can see here on this screen, 55% strongly agree with allowing ADUs, 65% support or strongly support changes to the zoning code to increase housing supply, and 61% support or strongly support allowing the market to decide. So, again, I think what we have this evening certainly addresses the interest of both stakeholders and the community as a whole. On the next slide, a quick summary of the differences of what's in our current code versus House Bill 1923, and you remember 2343, which was the more recent and flexible option, and we did amend our contract with the Department of Commerce to be more flexible based on Planning Commission recommendations. So, on the next slide, a quick, and really, between last month and this month, there's two changes. The easiest change was refining and simplifying the code specifically with regards to building and housing codes and the international fire code. You may remember in the last staff report, there was a lot of detail with regards to the housing code, the building code, safety standards, et cetera, and those are already in our code, and they don't necessarily need to be restated within a specific building type, however we do want to refer to them. So, in the ordinance that's attached to the staff report, you will see a reference, a simple reference, to the particular titles in the municipal code or directly to the IFC, the International Fire Code, and that was a recommendation from our building official to clean that up. So, that's been completed and proposed here. And the other difference is on the off-street parking requirements. You may remember that over the past few months, staff has brought to your attention the challenge with requiring parking, a dedicated off-street parking spot for one accessory dwelling unit, is that in many cases across the city, that would simply make the dwelling unit not possible just due to simple lot geometry or configurations. And the other instances, it actually defeats the purpose of making housing a little bit more affordable, especially for an extension of a family member to have an accessible dwelling unit. So, the 1923 legislation actually mandated that cities not require off-street parking, and after discussions with staff and after last month's Planning Commission meeting, staff does recommend that we do not require off-street parking for accessible dwelling units. And some other notes, no owner occupancy requirements, and short-term rental is not permitted with accessory dwelling units. And on the next slide, a few more items, obviously, some specific regulations for design standards. Unit size and unit height are also clearly identified in the proposal. And on the next slide, compliance with, again, you see the compliance with existing building, housing, and fire codes. Those are all referenced in the proposal, and again, staff would begin working on creating a sort of how-to guide, design guidebook, handbook, FAQ for applicants seeking to construct an ADU, whether it's attached or detached. Many cities have seen increased success and somewhat better customer service because there's a guide for this type of application, so staff would begin working on that. And that kind of sums up the proposal based on what we've discussed with Planning Commission over the past few months. On the last slide, we kind of summarized their recommendation and the approval to the Pasco City Council. The SEPA, Environmental Checklist, was completed, and a determination of non-significance was issued in late May. So, with that, I'm happy to, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions from the Planning Commission or members in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, any questions or comments or recommendations?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Go ahead, Commissioner Campos.
Jacob, thank you for the presentation. I just needed some clarity. I know that in the report, page five, talks about the exterior finish. On the presentation, it said complimentary, but in the report, it says must visually match in type, size, and placement from the exterior finish of both the ADU and the primary dwelling. My question is, that visually match or the complimentary, that doesn't mean that, let's say, if the primary dwelling is stucco, then the ADU has to be stucco? I mean, if it's lapsiding, that's okay as long as the same color or whatever it is?
Yeah, correct. The intent is that the accessible dwelling unit is complimentary but does not have to specifically mimic the primary dwelling unit. In some jurisdictions that have mandated that level of similarity, it does increase the cost if the finishing of the primary dwelling is pricey or there's challenges with the material, and certainly, that's passed on to the, you know, a much smaller accessory dwelling unit. So, the intent is to be complimentary as determined by the building official for the accessory dwelling unit proposal.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Campos. Any other questions from Commissioners? I just had one clerk. Oh, go ahead.
So, on page three, we recommend restricting ADUs from being used for short-term rentals. Did we define what constitute short-term rentals? Is that less than a year, less than six months, 30 days?
Yes, that would be less than 30 days would be considered a short-term rental.
Yeah, I had a building on that. I had a similar question. That's thank you, that clarification. Also, what's the citizen remedy for that? You know, say their neighbor is, you know, have somebody living there, non-short-term or short-term rentals, and is there some remedy process for that?
There is, and we get probably a couple dozen of these a year. It's referred to code enforcement. It's referred to code enforcement, and the, the thirty-day period comes from state fire code.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Other commissioner questions or comments? All right, hearing done, we'll open the public hearing. Are there any individuals here that wish to speak on this particular item tonight? If so, go ahead and step forward and state your name and city of address, or on the phone, raise your hand. Okay. Hearing done, we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion. Staff has made its recommendations.
This is Commissioner Handler. I, I find this really exceptionally good, and I am excited about moving, moving this forward, so I move to accept this. I'm, I'm, I move to, I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler.
Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
I second the motion. I second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Handler has moved, and Commissioner Lerman has seconded to close the public hearing on the proposed code amendment for House Bill nineteen twenty-three, file number CA two thousand twenty zero zero three, and recommend to the city Pasco, city council for adoption of the proposed code amendment for accessory dwelling units contained on the July fifteenth Planning Commission staff report. All those in favor? Aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing done, the motion passed unanimously. And again, I, from path forward, I assume it'll also be a workshop or a council item next month.
Yes, staff will prepare a workshop for city council likely in August. The ordinance itself is being reviewed by our legal department for consistency and accuracy. And also, just wanted to mention that this does wrap up the third of three, the third of three items with House Bill nineteen twenty-three. Planning Commission recommended approval of the law size averaging that's been adopted by council. The duplex, triplex, courtyard apartment amendment was approved by the planning commission early or late two thousand twenty, and that's going to council in August, and, and so is this item. So certainly appreciate planning commission's guidance on these three important items to address the housing crisis in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. With those three items, that means that there's, the House bill then affords some incentives to the city for completing those items, correct?
Absolutely, and it actually is a, is a head start on a housing action plan and implementation plan that we would be beginning hopefully this fall. Many cities actually adopt these amendments as part of that. We now get to focus on being a little bit more creative on how we address housing here because we've got this already, for the most part, completed. So a head start for sure.
Excellent. All right, we'll move on to the next public hearing agenda item, which is drive-through facility design standards, Master File CA two thousand twenty-one zero zero four. And we'll start with staff comments and presentation.
Good evening again, members of the planning commission. This is the second time we've shared this item with you. There was a, a brief presentation, I believe in March, that identified the need. And as it sits right now, the city of Pasco does not currently have specific regula-, regulations on drive-through facility standards. So this creates some inconsistency within the application process, a little bit of headache as well for both those trying to move their businesses forward through the permitting process and staff, because we have no specific standards in which to base our decisions on. So that increases time, confusion, and certainly lessens the, the customer service aspect of it. So the purpose of this proposal is to create, define, and then administer regulations for drive-through facility standards. So on the next slide, we've got approximately fifty-six drive-through facilities in the city of Pasco. This range from banks and financial institutions to pharmacies, the typical fast-food restaurant, car wash facilities. So there's about fifty-six of them, most of them along our two biggest heavy-traffic arterials, Burden, I'm sorry, Road sixty-eight, and West Court Street. And as you can see in the legend, the queue length ranges from zero to four hundred and fifty feet. And I wanted to prepare kind of a, what does each business, a business type have in terms of an average? But because there is no standard, it, it's just as sporadic as zero to four hundred and fifty feet. We have espresso stands with minimal feet, and we have banks with, you know, four hundred plus feet. So it's really difficult to narrow that down, but at least here's kind of a geographic scope of what we have in the city right now. On the next slide, I wanted to, to point out some of the, the complications that occur when there's a lack of standards in a busy area. So these are conflict points within the, the site itself. This is on Burden, just north of the Happo Center, east of Road sixty-eight. And you can see that within the site, that there's queuing lanes that intersect with the internal accessways of the parking lot. The internal site navigation is impacted because of that. And due to the proximity and access points, there is frequently disruptions to the public right-of-way. So again, this is just observed, not scientific, but you can kind of see all of the locations where there are potential conflict points. Those arrows have been slightly shifted to the southeast. They're supposed to align with what is a car wash facility just the north of the establishment there. And on the next slide, you can see what the opposite is, and this is on Court Street, just east of three ninety-five. And here, we have quite a few establishments with, within very close proximity to each other. And for the most part, each of them has an entrance and an exit within close proximity, and each of them are trying, the drivers that are exiting or entering those businesses are trying to navigate one of our busiest arterials as, as West Court Street. Again, varying queue distance and the frequency of access points, curb cuts, obviously disrupt the pedestrian accessibility, but certainly increase conflict points within the public right-of-way, as we have folks that'll line up and stay in the middle lane queuing almost as a secondary queue lane before they enter in the, the establishment they're wishing to visit. So with that, some quick policy guidance, and I wanted to point out specifically the comprehensive plan, implementation policy one A, which is to maintain code standards and guidelines which are clear, concise, and objective, and that's our intent with the proposal for you this evening. On the next slide, wanted to point out the, kind of the focus areas for this proposal, that being location, parking and circulation, a focus on vehicle stacking, the queue length of the, of the, of lanes, and some general site planning best practices as well. On location, the next slide, we've got five bullet points here that we wanted to discuss or hear feedback from the planning commission. Now, staff did research a variety of municipalities. Some were much more stringent, some were not at all. And so these certainly by no means are, are completed, but want to entertain comments from, from the planning commission this evening. And I'll run through these. The first one is that these facilities would not be permitted within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential land use or zone. You can see the asterisks because on that example on Court Street, those businesses are actually adjacent or right next to some multifamily, single-family homes. So there may be some additional refinement necessary to this particular bullet point. The next one refers to signalized intersections, LOS is Level of Service, C is kind of the typical standard here in the city. So if you are proposing a drive-through facility and you're within three hundred feet of a signalized intersection, based on a traffic impact analysis, which, which our businesses are required to complete, and, and it's determined that it's below C, so it's, it's essentially failing, you would, it either would not be permitted, or staff would recommend some additional supplementary documentation from the applicant that proves that their particular proposal would not interfere with the intersection's operations. Not permitted within the central district, that's not called out specifically in the current C-two Central Business District code, but there is quite a bit of language in our C-two district with regards to not allowing auto-oriented uses. Certainly, these would fall into that category. Most cities seeking to increase activity in their downtowns are, are careful to limit or eliminate auto-oriented uses in their downtown districts. The last two are with regards to the entrance and access points of these facilities or establishments. So again, not permitted within a hundred and seventy-five feet of a public intersection, and not permitted within three hundred feet of another drive-through establishment. That one, actually, both of those staff would certainly like to hear feedback from the planning commission, specifically on the last one. We certainly don't want to limit the amount of businesses here in the city of Pasco, but we do want to be careful with how they are planned adjacent to one another, specifically on, on busier corridors. So on the next slide, we talk about parking and circulation. This is where we would recommend that the primary access to the establishment is on an arterial or collector, so not a local access neighborhood street. Some general guidance on minimizing turning movement conflicts on public streets, separate queuing and circulation paths. So these are actually very basic concepts, but we don't have them in the, in the code today. And, and again, minimize the curb cuts, so kind of shared access, not only for the same business, but if there are multiple businesses stacked in within each other, staff would recommend that we require reciprocal access towards the back end of those facilities. It, that example from Burden Boulevard actually does that, but it's not clearly marked, signed, or, or designed, but it does have that reciprocal access component, just not in the right locations to facilitate, to facilitate access within that, within that property. On the next slide, the vehicle queue length, an important one. So again, some clear signage and markings. We would recommend that the drive-through lane be situated deep into the, the property or the lots. Or here you have an example of one that's not and one that is. The establishment on the right side, their parking queue lane goes all the way to the end of their property line. And on the left, you see that that's simply not the case, although it could have been, it might have been feasible within the design process. We have minimum width and turning radius requirements, so there's a standard across the city. A lot of our older establishments, vehicle size, lengths, and widths, and heights have grown quite a bit since drive-throughs have been brought to the country. So we want to make sure that our queue lanes can accommodate the, the vehicles that are intending to use them. And on the next slide, capacity requirements, and these are minimums, and again, a variety of cities were researched for this, some, again, more stringent than others. And our goal here was provide some general guidance with a minimum, so businesses could certainly exceed these. But we, while the minimums are in place as sort of a protection and safeguard, we certainly don't want to mandate a specific distance that the business would know better than, than we would in terms of what works for them. So that's the intent of this table here. So depending on the kind of use, a financial institution would be required to have a hundred and sixty feet, a gasoline station, queue lanes for thirty feet, so that's about one and a half vehicles, full-service car washes, restaurants, standalone espressos are specifically called out, and the espresso stands specifically below five hundred square feet are called out for that. There is certainly room for more refinement and revision to this table, but again, wanted to bring something to the planning commission for your, for your input. On the next slide, site planning, some general site planning, regu-, regulations here, buildings oriented towards a public street. This business does that quite well. Some clear marking, obviously compliance with the Pasco Municipal Code and our noise regulations. And, and again, you see that, that's actually a duplicate bullet point, but the entrance is not permitted with a hundred and seventy feet from the public street intersection. So some of the comments that we received back in March were minimizing the impacts to public streets. Here, you can see a, a fairly famous fried chicken restaurant in the Puget Sound that's two hundred feet from a very, very busy corridor, but their queue lane is four hundred feet. So it tells you the potential impacts that might happen. There's also a major interstate just west of this site. So we wanted to make sure that we address those comments, conserving and protecting access for adjacent businesses. We certainly don't want queuing lanes to impact the vitality of neighboring businesses. And again, proper evaluation of congestion impacts during the application review of these establishments. So we wanted to make sure we address that. We think we've, we've done a decent job of that throughout this initial proposal, would certainly welcome more feedback from the commission. And again, some next steps we are recommending, due to the, the level of work for this one, that we continue the public hearing, address comments from both the commission and the public, a determination of non-significance. The environmental checklist was issued in March, and a draft ordinance pending comments today could be ready for the planning commission on the August twenty-second meeting. So with that, that ends my presentation, and again, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Commissioners, questions and feedback or recommendations based on the draft that Jacob has presented to us?
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
I want to thank Mr. Gonzalez on his excellent slides, visuals, to allow for us to follow along with the specific standards that are talking about and how it applies and affects our city. So thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Commissioner Lerman. Others?
This is Commissioner Myron.
Go ahead, Commissioner Myron.
I don't know if it's been noted elsewhere, some of the, the drive-through configurations loop in on themselves and affect other parking, like this, this slide that's up now shows a drive-through that's egressing into a parking space, and there are other examples in the community. Is there any thought of standards that would require a, a drive-through to leave onto a, a side road, or, or maybe, we, we have some that go onto an arterial, but there are some that impact parking on the premises. Is that more of a private owner issue or a public transportation thing? What's, what's the dividing line there? I, I think the answer is both. You know, the members of the public will certainly reach out to city staff when there's an issue on a, on a business parking lot, for instance. We get those frequently, especially with some of the more busier areas. I, I think there is room for added clarity in how we would help to decrease conflicts, for instance, the, the queuing lanes that empty out or, or block parking lanes. We certainly don't want folks to be blocked in their parking spot while they wait for the line to shorten up. So staff will do some additional research and see if there's anything else we can add to the proposal that would help make that more clear for the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Myron. Anyone else? So I had a question regarding the, so does, do any of these things drive or relate to like minimum lot sizes? Because you would think like, some of these things, because of what we're trying to accomplish, would also then be, you'd be able to derive a minimum lot size based on the recommended configuration. And so maybe some of it could be accounted for, and you just can't do this kind of thing unless you have this much property, right?
So the commercial districts actually do not have a minimum lot size, and the, I believe the surface coverage is dictated by, or determined by the, the building itself and parking and, and all the setback requirements, et cetera, those still apply. We actually had a potential business come into the city with a proposal within the last year on a very small lot. They wanted to do walk-up only, but our parking requirements essentially made that not feasible. And so in the proposal, although not putting it out in the staff report, wanted to mention that we did try to begin to address businesses that maybe want to focus more on the walk-up customer versus the drive-through customer. And if that's the case, then perhaps the parking should, should be, be reduced, or there should be some considerations with that, with the appropriate documentation or, or analysis. So we do want to make room for more flexible and feasible developments, but right now, there's no minimum lot size in the commercial district and the C-one district.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Cochran, along those lines, because I'm old enough to be able to say this, but back in the day, the rule of thumb was you need, you needed three times as much lot as building size. That, that has increased over the years now to, it's almost, you need five times as much lot as building size, just because of additional parking size. As Jacob mentioned, the size, the size of vehicles has increased tremendously in the past twenty years, and most cities now require some kind of commercial landscaping in, in almost. And most cities now require some kind of commercial landscaping in in almost every zoning district.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question. In terms of these queuing lanes. As an example, you know, the Starbucks out there on Road sixty-eight, they they are oftentimes. Running way out into the street there, I can't remember, you know, I've gone up there, not not to go to Starbucks, just to get in. For whatever reason, to other businesses, and you're you're going around. You're going into the other lane, you're going, you're you're making a right turn, or you know, going around the. The people who are are in a holding queue there. And I'm just wondering, is there anything you can do to the, not 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 to be negative against the businesses, but somebody ought to be out. Somebody ought to go out there and 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 prohibit these people from from doing it, it's very, very dangerous. And they're probably, they 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 probably have met the queuing requirements for the restaurant. I'm I'm fully familiar with all that stuff, but but in busy times, they should be told they need to go out there and police their. Their queue, just for safety reasons, anyway. FYI, I don't know what 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 can be done about that, but certainly it's it's a it's an issue.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Any other commissioner comments?
This is Commissioner Myron.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Myron, again, for round two. I was just looking at section three of staff's presentation. There was a chart that showed different categories of establishments. And I was thinking about other types of facilities. You know, some of the big box stores have drive-up areas for either receiving. Orders or drive-through lanes for pharmacies in a big box store. Would would those sorts of establishments be covered in the other, or is that an opportunity for more discussion and clarity?
You know, actually pharmacies should should be included in here specifically. I I think I saw that actually in a few examples, so that'll be added. I don't remember what the length was. But there's there's enough of them to warrant being specifically called out here in the code.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, it's just been over the the last year, I think a lot of us have gotten used to doing drive-up. Delivery-style services at different establishments. That isn't necessarily a drive-through, but more of a drive-up to, so maybe that's a different store. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron. Yes, and we don't even have our own Chick-fil-A yet, so good thing we're talking about this now. With that, I think we'll open it up for comments from the public on this item. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now's the time to come forward. Please state your name and city of address for the record, or raise your hand on the online if you wish to speak. Doesn't look like we have any public to speak on this item. So with that, we'll go ahead and. Wait for a little bit more to see if anybody. Any other comments from commissioners or public? All right, with that, this one is recommended for carryover to the August Planning Commission meeting. So I don't know that we have a motion required, and it seems like there's a significant amount of more work to be done, so I think we can move on to the next item. The next item on the agenda is another code amendment item for the public hearing. Car washes adjacent to residential zoning districts, this is Master File CA twenty twenty-one zero zero seven. And we'll go ahead and start with staff comments and presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is, I think, relatively straightforward. There was a request received a couple of months ago to allow car washes to be closer than the three hundred foot limit we currently have. In the C three zone to residential districts. The C three zone is kind of unique because it pyramids, so. The C one zone, the typical zoning on Court Street or Road sixty-eight is C one. C three is maybe more prevalent along Oregon Street. But anything allowed in the C one zone is also allowed in the C three zone. So if you establish standards for the C one zone, they'll transmit upwards to the C three zone. So again, I think even though there was a workshop the last time the planning commission considered this. You did hear from the applicant, Mr. Ramsey, so to so to speak. I don't know, he was the official applicant, someone else applied. But I I think the the issues are relatively straightforward and they're called out in the staff report. I think the big, the the big items of interest are probably the queuing length that you heard Jacob just make a. A good presentation on, certainly the noise, that was the driver of the three hundred foot limit in the first place. The circulation and access and maybe screening, depending on how close you are to a residential area. Before the meeting, Jacob and I noticed a couple of contradictions between the some of the standards and the. Draft ordinance that you have before you tonight. And the draft ordinance that Jacob just presented, and we'll we'll clean those up. But again, this is to get this in front of the commission. Obviously, the additions are the colored print in the orange or red, whatever that is. And there's there's a couple of things I need to take a second look at, particularly the length of the queuing in bays. And the hours of operation, but essentially, it's recommended that the commission look at this. Not just in C three zones, but also in C one zones. Because the language in our code is very minimal and really doesn't do much for anybody except prohibit things. Close to residential areas, so certainly welcome any comments the commission may have. It is recommended that this come back again before the commission in August. We'll have a much tighter grip on the code language and some of the contradictions, and we'll eliminate those. And and have something for more formal consideration and probably a recommendation.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. White. Commissioners, are there questions or feedback on this item? I had one, I think the last time we talked about this, maybe it was in the workshop, or maybe it was public hearing. We talked about some of the, maybe it was the applicants or providing industry-standard noise recommend recommendations. Were those all incorporated? It looks like you have some decibel recommendations.
Yes, they were. That language was incorporated, and and that's relatively easy, we have come to find out, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Hearing none, this is a public hearing item, so we'll open it up for individuals from the public, any individuals that wish to speak on this item. This is now your time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Rick Simon, and I was the one who originally filed the request for a code amendment. On behalf of Broadmoor RV, who owns some property in a C three zone and are desirous of of establishing a car wash. So.
Let me just comment. State your city of address.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nine eight four two North Harrington Road, West Richland. We have a whole team of folks here. We have representatives from Broadmoor RV and McKay Construction and and Bruce Baker, the project architect. We all just are here to lend our support to what staff has prepared. And we believe those are reasonable standards in terms of noise mitigation and fencing and and hours of operation. So we just support the direction that that the commission seems to be moving in, so thank you.
Thank you for being here. Any other public comments? Anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Just altogether. Awesome. Thank you for being here. Anyone on the phone? Any other public comments? Any final questions or clarifications from from commissioners? Okay, the recommendation is to carry this forward to the next commission meeting, so no motion is required. This is the last item on the public hearing agenda, so we will go ahead and close the public hearing. And move on to the workshop portion. The workshop has no items, I believe, so we'll move on. Are there any other business items?
If the commission will indulge me, I'll get to the end of this, I kind of forgot to move it forward. But there's a very, very good article in the Tri-City Area Journal of Commerce. On the industrial investment that's occurring in Pasco just as of just recently. The the Dairy Gold Facility was announced to their their board and and their, not the board, their shareholders. And that's roughly a five hundred million dollar investment. The Port of Pasco is kind of leading that charge. It's in the Expanded Urban Growth Area that was recently approved by the county commissioners. The Reesers Food Processing Plant, they're constructing an additional plant. Across Highway three ninety-five on the east side of Highway three ninety-five, and they're repurposing their existing plant. To do a different product line, and I'm not positive, I know what it is, but both of those plants will be producing things. On a national scale, so that's probably a two to three hundred million dollar investment. There's a startup company, part of a one billion dollar initial public offering. That produces leafy green vegetables. This was a company that completely entered the radar. I talked with them maybe eight, nine months ago, thought they went away, they came back. They're building a forty million dollar plant south of Bay Street. Roughly at, gee, right about Heritage Boulevard or so, little bit, little bit west of that. So all in all, that's three major industrial projects, and we have one, two, three, four additionals that are not ready for announcement. But they will be approaching a level of investment that's really going to skew our our permit value for for twenty. Twenty-one and twenty-two, so that that's really great news. My philosophy is if you have the right land use designation in place and you have the right zoning assigned. And you're within striking distance with utilities and roads, then you know, you're probably going to end up getting really fortunate someday. And that seems to be what's happening. So there's that, and three planning efforts I wanted to notify the commission about. There's a downtown plan that we're focusing effort on, and I think we're. The scope of work is now complete, and we're, it it's starting right now. So that'll be probably a year-long effort by the time it's all said and done, but it's very worthwhile and and it'll be money well spent. Jacob mentioned our housing capacity plan again. And by the way, I want to compliment Jacob, he's done a ton of work on House Bill nineteen twenty-three. Not that all of his time's going to be paid for, but we are going to get our full allotment of forty-five or forty-seven thousand dollars or so back from the state. To pay us, so to speak, for the staff time invested in this effort. And then Broadmoor Master Plan is continuing. You you read the news about the potential Costco location there. That will be a very strong attraction, and we want to get that plan in place before what I think will be a. A substantial springboard from from Costco for other businesses and residential development. So just those three things. Two things, and. Yeah, thanks for the commission's time, particularly on the code amendments. I know we have to come back and forth a couple of times, but. The the your input and the details, very appreciated. Council appreciates it, I know. And they've, the code amendments that they've that you've recommended, they've approved. It has not been, there's been not a lot of questions on your recommendations.
Excellent, and thank you for you and your staff's time, Mr. White. Yeah, I heard about the Dairy Gold Plan, it's like a thousand jobs as well, right? That's that's pretty great news. So that's pretty cool. Build it and they will come, I guess. Well, with that, I think we're, the last item, we're we're done with workshop, no workshop and other business. Are there any other comments or questions on Mr. White's comments from the commissioners? Hearing none, we will move forward to adjourn the meeting. The meeting is adjourned.